So, moving along to item number 12, Agassiz Peak renaming process. Receive input from the council on the name change proposal for Agassiz Peak currently being considered by the Arizona Board on Geographic and Historical Names.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Good evening. Sarah Langley, I am your Public Affairs Director. I am actually going to kick it over to Commissioner, sorry, Commissioner Darrell Marks. He has another obligation that he needs to get to, so we'd like for him to have a chance to speak before he has to leave. Thank you.
Good evening, greetings. So, I'm sure that, from what I heard, that you've already heard from the National Board on Geographic Names, which is great. A few years back, I think early 2020, before all the closures and everything happened, youth at Flagstaff High School came together to do a workshop on press releases, and what does that look like? The topic they chose was looking at San Francisco Peaks and the names that it holds. Some of the things that they started to understand in their research was that some of the names that are up on the mountain right now are inappropriate and don't align with their cultural context and the things that they've learned growing up. An example that was given, some of our Native American, or Navajo students had said that, growing up, we were taught by our elders that this mountain is called Tokooslied. It wasn't until we came to either live or go to school here in Flagstaff that people were calling it a different name, San Francisco Peaks. And in the process of identifying each of the individual peak names that are up there, they came across the name Agassiz. And in their research of Agassiz, they found that what he's known for prominently isn't quite appropriate to our communities of color, and certainly not for those of the Native American students that were participating in this workshop. And so, they began the process of identifying, how do we as young people advocate for that name to be changed? They held a press conference. Vice Mayor Whalen at the time came and was present, along with some media, and they shared their presentation with her. She then said, well, I, as city, we can't really make any changes with the mountain directly because of that being county forest land, and it might go through, have to go through a federal process. But we can definitely work on changing some of the names here in Flagstaff, which led to a public process. They got to change the name of Agassiz Street to what it is now, and that gave the students an opportunity to not only reflect that, something that they've all been meaning to ask, something that their parents and their grandparents were all wondering why this mountain would hold such a name. And that began the process of doing more research, going out to the communities and asking more questions. We were fortunate enough, through some of the press releases that went out, some of the articles that were written, that the youth were put in contact with the actual Agassiz descendants. They were able to come to Flagstaff, meet with the youth, and all said that they didn't think it was appropriate that their family's name be on the mountain because of the history of Louis Agassiz. They're in the process of, they're in a lawsuit process with Harvard University, trying to remove his name from the university. And so, they sent a letter of support. That's in the information that Micaias and Michellea will share with you. Micaias and Michellea have kind of been the spearhead youth in this effort. One of the things that I want to say in close, without taking too much time from them, is that they were just coming out of high school when they started this process. They're getting ready to graduate from university. I recognize that it's a slow-moving process. I want them to feel that we're listening as the adults, the parents, that generation. The paperwork was filed with the US Geographic Board, and we're hopeful that city will support the youth as the board comes to Flagstaff and asks more questions about who feels that this should change. Now, during the press release, some of the youth recognized that the majority of them were Navajo. But they also knew that Navajo community doesn't necessarily have specific names for all of the peaks, and if they do, much of that is being lost to the generations. They do recognize their Hopi relatives have a name for that particular peak, which we call Agassiz from Flagstaff. And that mountain is Omaki, and that's what was presented and submitted in the paperwork. And you'll hear from Michellea what that name means, and why that's of importance to not just Hopi people, Native American people, but all of Flagstaff. With that, I pass it on to Michellea, who I hope is ready to go online, and she'll share a little bit of the PowerPoint, and Micaias is here to answer some questions for Any and All.
Thank you.
Okay, let me show my camera.
Michellea, we're having a hard time hearing you.
Okay, can you hear me? Oops.
Yes, we can. Do you have a camera by chance? Terrific.
Okay, there I have a camera. Sorry, I just came straight from campus. Let's see, I'm trying to figure out how to share.
Michael, it's up on the top right side, next to the Leave button.
Okay, can you see it? Okay, are you able to see it?
Yes.
Okay. I think my, it'll work better if I turn on my camera, because my internet's kind of iffy. But I'd like to say hello. Thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Michellea So. I am currently a student at the University of Arizona, so that's why I'm not there in person. I'm not, I just wanted to announce that I'm not one of the original people that has started advocating for the restoring of the name. In the past years, I've gone out of my way to go into the community and collect stories from Native elders, youth, and supporters. So, I've been doing, that's my part in all of this. I also like to share some background information about Agassiz Peaks, and that's why, and why we are advocating to rename Agassiz Peak. So, this is, okay, so this is a kind of a map of where, geologically where Agassiz Peak is, and then above, on the bottom is like the names that all, of the other indigenous tribes, what they call this. Behind the Agassiz Peaks, as you know, it was named after, after this figure who legitimized racist beliefs of white superiority, and why we are trying to get the name changed. And so, and a little more background information is that at a lecture at, at a club in South Carolina, Agassiz had announced that African Americans constituted a separate species, not meaning that they're human, and that the relations between blacks and whites were immoral and destructive to social equality. Had gone and done, based off of the, from what I've saw on Coconino Forest Services' website, Agassiz Peak was named in 1867 after the famous zoologist Louis Agassiz, who made a fossil study. And you can find this on the website, so this is where I had got it from. This is an issue for indigenous communities, because he legitimized racist beliefs of superiority. So, keeping the name Agassiz Peak deeply affects indigenous communities because these indigenous communities, us, associate the Sacred Mountain as with spiritual deities, ancestors, emergent ceremonies, climate conduit, and still integral to today's daily practices. So, that's the reason why I had tied in not only stories from my own family, but as well as going into other tribal communities, such as Hopes, and getting their, their own personal connection as to what this, what this, what the mountain means to them, and what they were taught. And these are the sacred names, and of all the 13 indigenous tribes that considered San Francisco Peaks as a sacred peak. And then, these are just some of the quotes that I had gotten from elders, and this doesn't sum up all the stories that I've heard. And it's kind of hard to translate Navajo into English, because in Navajo, it means a lot more. And then also, in Hopi, where I would go into communities and they would tell me, it was kind of hard there for the translator to get the meaning to me. But when Hopi or their Navajo language, it means so much more. So, it was, there's kind of that barrier, but it, you can tell from the stories that they share, it means so much to them. So, this, that was my part of trying to bring people's stories and showing that, how much this mountain means to them. And then not all, oh, then not also only from elderly, but also from youth, because they're the ones who are going to be continuing all these traditions and ceremonies and prayers. And I wanted to, we wanted to integrate that into why we are doing this, because we are not only doing this for them, we're doing it for elders, our ancestors, and the people that come after us. And then, this is some of the press release that Mr. Marks had talked about, and so I just wanted to share that as well. Credit, as beginning, I said that I wasn't the one who started this. So, we're just kind of continuing to grow from that and trying to get this to, to go into changing the name. And this is my closing statement. Agassiz Science was used to try to legitimize racist beliefs of white racial superiority, therefore naming a peak after him is inappropriate and antagonizes the beliefs and acknowledgements of indigenous nations and other communities of color. This creates a culture of racism and connotation that we deem as unacceptable. So, this, this is the reason why we are trying to get this, because, to get the name changed, because it doesn't align with who we are as indigenous communities, and also as people who live in Flagstaff.
Thank you. And, and would, do you have something to add to that, or are you here strictly for questions?
I am here at whatever capacity that is required of me. So, if you have questions or comments, or just want to have a conversation about it, this is the space to have it right now.
Excuse me, one moment. So, Sarah, you also have a presentation, is that correct?
I just wanted to note that Rose Tohe, our Coordinator for Indigenous Initiatives, was not able to be here tonight, because she's actually traveling for work. She really wanted to make a comment on this, though, so we did record some remarks from her. If you'd like, I can play that now, and then we can take questions if that works.
Yes, please.
Great. All right. It's about a two-minute video, so.
Yad ek greetings, Mayor and Council. Sheit ha chitni no da inchne do, ken la chitni vashis chin. Ashkaan zoida shanaldo, oshin dashe chay. Those are my clans's. My name is Rose Tohe. I'm the Coordinator for Indigenous Initiatives, City of Flagstaff. Ah yehat, thank you for this opportunity to speak. I commend our youth, our local students who have started this process through the state naming board, the council to weigh in. It is important to emphasize that the students have been in front of the Indigenous Commission here at the City of Flagstaff, and they provided a presentation. They asked for their support in this process, and the Indigenous Commission has voted in support of the name change. I also wish to share the following to provide a context for council and those listening. The sacred peaks, known as the San Francisco Peaks, are known to the Dinah people as Tokooslied, emphasizing the majestic view and the brilliance of the snow on top. To the Dinah people, the mountain is a female entity and represents the western boundary. She is a holy place for the Hopi, Navajo, Havasupai, Zuni, Apache, and other tribal nations in northern Arizona. She is associated with emergence, deities, ancestors, life-giving moisture, and ceremonies. The medicine people, our traditional practitioners, collect their much-needed items for their medicine bundles and the herbs for healing ceremonies. The sacred mountain are a source of healing and curing powers. As indigenous people, we continue to believe in the strength source that she gives, and our ceremonies continue to this day. This mountain, she represents love. For my beloved Flagstaff community members who understand the concept of being a good relative and embrace kinship, we can feel that sense of identity, respect for Tokooslied, love for the children of this land, and connection to a higher source of wisdom. Thank you for your time. Ah yehat.
Thank you, Mayor, for that, and I'll turn it back to you and the council and Micaias for your discussion. Thanks.
Great, thank you. So, we'll take questions from council members, but we'll save discussion for after-public comment. All right? So, Councilmember Matthews, you had your hand up.
Thank you, Mayor. And the first speaker covered it, but I just wanted to express, when this came first into conversation, I had questions or concerns about honoring all the tribes that we have in our area, and that was explained, I think, before. So, I just wanted to acknowledge that, and, and I'm very thankful and encouraged to see our youth take an initiative. And it's got to feel really wonderful to see something that is so heartfelt coming to fruition. So, I just wanted to make that comment and congratulate all of you.
Other questions? Well, questions? Okay. So, I'm going to take some public comment, and then we will have council discussion. So, first up is Adam Shimoney.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, leaderships, staff, members of the public, good to be here with you. I'm speaking today on behalf of myself, of course, and I just wanted to say a few things. You know, government bodies of all levels have systemically done harm over the generations. And, and efforts such as this are examples of that harm. Those harms can be big and small, right? Subtle, things that float under the radar, and other things are more blatant in your face. Names such as the Agassiz Peak are an example of this. Although we have normalized this act of aggression through this name, it's never too late to address a wrong. I know that the city is busy with many other topics of interest, but this topic does have momentum, and I support you all continuing with this momentum. I do find it worthwhile. I don't believe Louis Agassiz embodies the values of our city, nor our community. I'm grateful to those who have been working to elevate this discussion over the years, especially the youth, and, and want to place my support in you all taking some action this evening and moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Adam. Fontoya?
Good evening, Mayor Daggett, and council members of City of Flagstaff. Most of you know me as Commissioner Toya, and I also belong with the Indigenous Circle of Flagstaff. But tonight, I'm representing myself. I'm Hopi, and sorry, I might get a little emotional, but I have some comments to make. I serve here in many groups and work for the community every day as my job, and I wanted to let you all know that I did some homework, and I was able to have a discussion with tribal leader, village leader, and I want to just make some comments without kind of, you know, going too in-depth to what is very sacred to us in this spiritual way, and being respectful of my Hopi people. Agassiz Peak is Omaki, the Cloud House. If you Google Agassiz Peak, you'll see that it has a quoted comment on there that it is in the Katsina Peaks Wilderness on the Coconino National Forest. So, with that being said, I want to respectfully ask that you consider the name change, and this is in support also to our youth. They're the ones that are going to lead us into the future. They are going to be the ones to carry on our cultural, religious ceremonies that we are thankfully lucky enough to continue as we were not able to for the past three years. And so, once we've recently gotten that back, that is why I'm so emotional, because it takes a lot for someone like me to represent our people and stand in front of you to explain some of this. But I do thank you for your time, and I hope that, you know, this process is a calm process, a respectful process. And I just want to also let you all know that this is part of generational trauma. Hopes and Navajos, we've all both endured a lot in our journey, and that's even against each other's. But this request today proves that we can all come together as one, as stewards of this land. So, that is what I want to tell you all tonight. I appreciate your time, and thank you very much. Eskoli.
Thank you, Font. And if you'll stay there, please, Councilmember McCarthy has a question.
Well, briefly, thank you for your comments tonight. My question is, how do you pronounce the proposed name?
Omaki.
Thank you.
Yes. And, you know, I did talk to the, some of the Hopi tribal officers, too. So, just know that they were consulted, and they know of this meeting tonight, and so that the Hopi tribe is aware. I let a few of the officers know. So, just want to let you know that one of them did give a blessing to you all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I have a question of staff, and, and I'm not sure that you'll be able to answer this. Seems like I ask a lot of questions where I say that I'm not sure you can answer this. So, if, if we support this, what is the next step?
Thank you, Mayor. And it's actually a bit of a complex process, so I made some notes in case this question did come up. But so, as some of the other speakers referenced, we did, or the mayor and council did receive an email from the Arizona State Board on Geographic and Historic Names. They have received the proposal from the Flagstaff youth, and so now, they have a process that they follow. And currently, they are in the phase where they collect input from stakeholders throughout the community. They've also reached out to the Board of Supervisors, I know, and some other stakeholders in the community. So, they're currently in that process. The next time they meet, after they've gathered all this feedback, they will then make their recommendation on if they support the name change or not. They did note that it could take several meetings for them to reach that recommendation. So, you know, we're not sure how long that process will take. If they do vote in support of a name change, there are kind of two separate processes that take place, and it sounds like Arizona is kind of a unique state for this. So, the first is the state level. If the Arizona State Board on Geographic and Historic Names supports the name change, they send that to the Arizona Secretary of State, as well as the Coconino County Recorder. That name is then, the new name for the peak would then be used at the state level for all publications, such as maps, records, things like that. So, they have the authority to change the name at the state level. They also send their recommendation to the, wrote down the name here, US Board on Geographic Names, which is the federal body. The federal body then conducts their own process, and they noted these could happen concurrently as well. And then, that board has the power to make a name change at the federal level and change the name on federal documents. So, kind of two processes that could occur separately, concurrently. But if you do support the students' proposal tonight, staff will draft a letter noting that support, send that to the Arizona Board, and then they will continue with their process. So, I hope that helps a bit.
It does, thank you. And Councilmember House?
Thank you, Mayor, and sorry. It's just a related question to that, because the, so, from my recollection, the email came to us as council, but was it soliciting a single message on behalf of this, or was it asking for each to speak as an individual stakeholder?
Thank you, Councilmember, for that question. I don't believe it specified. So, you could, you could probably take either, either route, whichever you preferred.
You.
That guy.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for the question. Councilmember House, it did not specify, but in some discussions internally and with the mayor, I believe it was decided that a collective input by the council would be the most powerful. And we did not want to wait until the end of the month to do that. Three of the council will be absent next week, so that is one of the reasons we kind of rushed to get this on the agenda tonight. But with your consent, we would draft that letter for the entirety of the council if that was the choosing. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Councilmember Matthews?
Thank you, Mayor, and I want to just acknowledge City Manager Clifton for escalating this at our last Indigenous Commission, and thank you, Commissioner Toya, for being here and representing. I know that Rose Tohe was really disappointed not to be here, but it was of utmost urgency for us. And so, staff, Sarah, and I don't know if this is the appropriate time to ask this question, but I brought it up before, because this has been a topic that we have discussed in, in the past. But in waiting for the state to make their ruling, whether they do or not, is it possible and appropriate for us to move forward in the city's referencing the different peaks, not waiting on their move, but in our marketing and advertising? Is that something that we could possibly consider?
Thank you, Councilmember, for the question. I would probably defer to the city manager on, on his input on that. That might be at his decision-making.
Thank you. And thank you for the question, Councilmember. We're glad to look into that, and, you know, if there are no impediments to doing so, we will do so, if that is the direction of the council.
Thank you. Michaelis?
I have a question for you. Hello. So, it was stated that the Navajo Nation doesn't have a specific name for that specific peak, and that's how the Hopi name was chosen. How were other tribes brought into the discussion, or were they? And if they weren't, it sounds like there's a process when it goes through the state, so there's still additional process for the public to weigh in. I just kind of... I'd just kind of like to, to know that. And, and before you answer, I'd just like to thank you and your fellow students for all the work that you've put into it getting to this place.
So real quick, before I continue on to answer that question, I do this for me and the peoples I come from. Yate, sheeet, twan in the shlen, tapaha, bashis chink, achi, dashi, che, aro, na kai de ne, dashinale. Sheeet, Makai Smarks in the shee. So real quick, I am near the water, born from water. My mother's father is Red Bottoms people. And my father's father is the peoples coming home. Name's Makai Smarks. And I introduce myself that way because that's how you introduce yourself in any space you come into, especially when we're coming to have this conversation at this capacity. Because there is a long history here in Flagstaff, especially with Indigenous peoples. Flagstaff wouldn't exist if Indigenous peoples weren't here. A lot of us, a lot of the tribes, we laid down the foundational work so that this community could be built on top of it. And as we're having this conversation, we're going to be having that, that discussion with that kind of history, the history of genocide and assimilation. When it comes to having the conversation with all 14 tribes, the dialogue and the conversation varies different from the community to the governmental bodies. I know we as the Nepeau people and me personally, that my family and the students' families have had these conversations at a community level. And we've all come to the consensus that, of course, this mountain, its name needs to change because this mountain doesn't represent who we are as a community, who we are as a people. We are here in the sacred southwest. And of course, we, we have each an own idea of what that name should be. But it is not argued that the name needs to be changed, a name that reflects the community. And through discussion with each individual, not just a collective, not just government officials saying, oh, yeah, we speak for everybody. When everyone has a different idea and a different opinion, that Omaki is the name that will begin that discussion, saying this is the House of Clouds. Everyone here in Flagstaff, especially from a Western mindset, can see that these clouds come here all the time, bringing the rain that we need, bringing the snow that is a pain in the butt to shovel away. And the rain does make its presence known, especially here in Flagstaff after those wildfires. But right there, underneath that, underlining all of that is us as Indigenous peoples who have always lived here and will always be here. What is the name going to be? Is it going to be Omaki? I would love it because I am Navajo. Yeah, it's not. I have family and relatives who are Hopi. And I understand the history between Navajo and Hopi. I know Navajo Nation's a huge nation. It has a big, it takes a lot of space, especially when it walks into any room because it's a big nation. But that's why I think it's going to be Omaki. It's going to be the Hopi name because the Hopi's have, at least from my family, always seen them stay true to who they are, to have that kind of discipline. And that's something that this community is going to need as we continue to go forward, as we're looking into the past, seeing the pain we've done, but as well as acknowledging the influences, the things that we brought here so that we can create that better future. So, yeah, that conversation is going to be had. And I'm sure all of you will be participant to those discussions because it's not just limited to Indigenous peoples, but all communities of color. Because we've all given something, the Asian Pacific Islanders, the Black African American, the Spanish speaking, all of us have given peace of ourselves to this community. And we want that to be reflected in this mountain. So it was intentional to lay that seed of Omaki, to not just have that discussion with the tribes, but with everybody because this is our home.
Thank you. And you know that there's a city council election in 2024, right?
You flatter me. Thank you.
Comments, questions? I think we're, I think we're ready to move forward. And I'd like to hear from council what your, your feelings are. Councilmember McCarthy.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate you calling on me. I was on council when we changed the name of Agassie Road, which went right in front of the downtown post office. And for the same reasons that I supported changing the name then, I support changing the name now. I would like to say that I am comfortable with the Hopi name, Omaki. I'm not sure I'm pronouncing that correctly. Pretty close.
Oh, you got it. You got it.
Thank you. And I strongly support a letter of support going to the appropriate parties. I guess my only remaining question is, I think I've seen the Omaki spelled a couple different ways, sometimes with hyphens and, and different punctuation. So I'm really not sure how that, I think, Sarah, maybe you can kind of address that before the letter goes out. But anyway, in summary, I'm very supportive. I'm very supportive of using the Hopi name in this case. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you so much, Omaki and also Mashala, and to all the youth who inspired me on Indigenous Peoples' Day this past year to really think hard about this. And I think this came up originally as a two-from. For me, it was all based and predicated off of the work that you guys were doing and the excitement and the inspiration that I received in my heart and prayerfully from your presentation and your very good discussion. I know we have a history of doing this already. I think those small steps were incredibly instrumental in moving us forward and helping to build momentum around this. And I hope it's obvious that my excitement for this, this change and moving forward with this is, is obvious. I do have a couple of thoughts to share. I'll try to be quick. You know, it's interesting. This isn't the first time that I've found myself involved in a name change regarding eugenicist. When I was a community organizer in inner-city Sacramento, I did a lot of work with churches. And I also did a lot of work with public schools and public small schools. And one of the schools that I was in and out of all the time, working with teachers and parents and students, was called Charles M. Gady Middle School. And it was in a predominantly African-American community on the south side of Sacramento. And the school administrator called me into the office one day. We had a nice rapport. We talked to each other a lot. She was African-American. Almost everybody who worked there was. And she had just found out, and she was so upset, she went looking around to see who this guy was the school is named after. And he was a prominent and, and very rich eugenicist back in the 1920s. And he was, he was personally responsible in spearheading of the involuntary sterilization of over 20,000 Black women in the state of California. And so she was absolutely just stricken with disgust. And because of my background as an organizer, I recognized an opportunity there. And we got to talking and knocking heads. And I don't think it was a year that went by before the name of Charles M. Gady was, was struck from the school board rosters. And the school, by a process that was led by the public, was renamed to Rosa Parks Middle School. It was one of the first schools to be named that because Rosa Parks had just passed away, if my memory and timeline is correct on that. So just an amazing process. And it's so weird to see the heated arguments on the side of keeping, of holding on to old names for places. I think every generation and every group should have the opportunity to change a name if they want to. We are on Indigenous land. And we shouldn't make the mistake of thinking that this is about a self-avowed eugenicist, although it also certainly is about that. You know, this peak could be named Liberty Bell Mountain for all it care. We should still be having this conversation. So many things have been taken away from the Indigenous settlers of this region in the name of colonialism and expansion by one particular arbitrary group. And this sort of conversation is, is one that we should all jump on because it's healing and it creates a future together. It's, it's the way forward. Whatever name we choose, we should at least embrace the conversation and the exploration of what we name our sacred spaces. One thing I do know, and I know it in my own way, I'm not trying to appropriate anything here, I find those peaks to be very sacred. And I can only imagine how instrumental and important they are as one of the four cardinal symbols of this land for the peoples who originally settled here. And so it's really important to, to keep that in mind and to honor that. You know, and just a couple more thoughts. I say this cheekily, Councilmember Matthews, but I didn't even think your question was necessary. I just assumed that we were all in here and we would do whatever we can locally as, as well as beyond. And I'm glad to hear you raise that question because it's, it's always necessary to ask the question, I'm finding, of being up here in the dais. So thank you for crossing those Ts and dotting those Is and making sure we're moving forward. And I, I want to bring this up. I, I, you know, I realize there's probably some sensitivities here that I'm stepping into. And my intent is not to stir feelings or anything. But, you know, I have an obligation here from the dais to speak truth to power and to put on the record statements, you know. And whatever else happens here, I do think that we need to call upon Snowball to change the name of Agassies that they use on their slopes. Now, that's a conversation couched in many layered issues. But at least that should be a part of this as well as we seek to go even further with a new understanding around how we all get along on that subject. But I just thought I'd throw that into the mix. I hope, I hope they're listening over there because this is long overdue. I think it is, it's, it's, it's being driven by our youth. It's a community-supported activity. And really, I'm kind of, you know, I guess I'm kind of naive, but I'm feeling optimistic that this will quickly move through the Arizona Board on Geographic and Historic Names with a good result and that we can plow forward with our bigger ambitions through an act of Congress. Because I just think that these sensitivities are changing. People are starting to understand the dynamic and the history involved here. And really, this is honestly low-hanging fruit in terms of ways, ways to rectify and reconcile past mistakes and, and aggressions. And it's always appropriate to take another look at the, at the, at what we call our sacred spaces. Because these sensitivities change and evolve over time and people change and evolve over time. And the way we understand ourselves as individuals and as members of a community and a collective also change over time. And we should be allowed to reflect that in the very words we use to, to, to call what is sacred what it is. So thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember House.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Makaius and Fawn and all who have been involved in this process. I am wholeheartedly in support of, of moving this forward and sending out as strong a language of support for this as we can. I asked the question about individual or council statement of support primarily because I, I want our statement to be as strong as it can be. And agree that a joint and unified statement has a lot of power coming from, on behalf of council. But also want to ensure that we all remain mindful of the power of our individual voices and speaking up and speaking out on these sorts of topics. You know, I think it was Fawn who made the statement of, of this being rooted very much greatly in generational trauma. And I could not have expressed that better myself. I also was able to participate in the Indigenous Peoples' Day presentations and just remember the statement from one of the youth of the fear of not having the opportunity to become an elder within the Indigenous community because of these sorts of things that, that have happened and perpetuate white supremacist ideologies and Indigenous and BIPOC erasure culturally. And in the midst of that conversation, I remember the statement of the importance of moving from land acknowledgement to land action. And that is something that sticks with me very much in this conversation. And this is a moment and an opportunity, I believe, for us to move from simply land acknowledgement, which is very important, but into land action through that renaming. And I, I believe it was phrased in the presentation that was shared very wisely as not renaming, but reclaiming. And I think that's an important thing for us to remember as well is that we are not erasing the history of, of the person whose name is, is on that peak now. But we are repairing the harm that was done in the erasure of the Indigenous cultures and histories that existed in that place that were erased for the sake of that naming. So this is, I think, very important. I want to see us move forward in whatever ways we can to move this initiative forward, to spark these conversations, as you said, that will come from this proposal. And in whatever ways that we can support this, I want to be part of that. So thank you for bringing this forward. Thank you for the work that you have put in for years to make this happen and to get to this point. And I hope that we are able to move forward in a way that is not a continuation of the legacy of just wait for it. I want to see us able to take action. And I, I'm reminded of the phrase that I have brought up from that side of the lectern to council of if not us, who, if not now, when? And I think now is the time and we are the council that can move this forward. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember House. Councilmember Matthews.
Thank you, Mayor. And just, I really appreciate the comments from Vice Mayor and, and Councilmember McCarthy and, and House and the ones to come. I think you're getting the idea how strongly we all support this. And I just, there's a whole list of reasons why I feel very supportive of this. But one of the ones that really stick out for me personally is that, you know, so many times, well, we can't change past traumas and stuff. But this feels very healing, acknowledging the past that was, was done and acknowledging that we're trying to just re-recognize and to Councilmember House's comments, to reclaim what was taken away a long time ago as far as acknowledgement. So just thank you all again for your efforts. And, you know, ex-councilmember Adam Shimon over there is a great coach in running for office. And it's about time that we had some Native American representation up here, so.
Thank you, Councilmember Matthews. Councilmember Sweet and then Councilmember Harris.
Thank you. And thank you for bringing this forward and being here tonight. I am both humbled and inspired by this conversation and by you and my colleagues. I love this, so thank you. I am very supportive of moving this forward, writing the letter as strong as we can. And I love the name Omaki. It's a beautiful name. And I look forward to having more community conversations surrounding this and the sacred. And I look forward to having more community conversations surrounding this and the sacred peaks. Thank you again.
Thank you, Councilmember Sweet. Councilmember Harris?
Thank you. A moment in time turned into a movement. And so that's, those are my words. Those are the words of Dr. Guthrie, used to be Ethnic Studies Professor at NAU. So a moment in time, you've turned into a movement. And so congratulations to all of you for all of your work on this. It has never been, whether or not I supported the name change, and I did from the very beginning. I just wanted to make sure that we were not promising something that we could not deliver. And so now that we know the process, we can write our letter individually, collectively, and any other groups that we belong to, to send those letters of support forward. And for the groups that I'm a part of, I will definitely be taking this back to them and asking them to weigh in on the conversation. I was aware of the conversation when it started years ago with the Black Student Unions at NAU, when they wanted to change the name Agassiz to something else in their union. And so again, I say, a moment in time changes into a movement. So with that said, staff, you have, I guess, my okay, or my vote, to move forward with as much speed as we possibly can to get this done. And whatever name is chosen, I will be at those conversations, but I will be silent because I think that the Indigenous population need to make that choice, and we need to listen to what they have to say. And so I will be at any meetings that occur, but I will not be speaking. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Harris. To wrap up, I'd just like to, again, thank the youth, and I hope that, that adults that mentor youth and our youth as they're coming up can, can see their power through not only this. I mean, you all have, have, have done so much. But I, I hope that this is a moment where you can really feel your power and mentors can help the youth understand how powerful they are and how welcome into the conversation that they are. Vice Mayor said something that I wrote down. This creates a future together. And that really resonated with me. And I see this as, as a way to acknowledge and honor our kinship, as, as Rose so beautifully put it, and, and our respect for each other. And this is merely one step. This is just one step in our process. And I'm honored to be a part of that step. Councilmember McCarthy?
Unless there's some objection.